Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2026 water and sewer rates as well as curbside collection. I'm going to first go through the water and sewer rates. If anybody has any questions at any time after I'm done or at any point, you can go right over to that table right there and speak into that mic. So, welcome here tonight. This has been a challenge at best to make sure that we try to keep our rates as responsible as possible, given some tough financial climates and inflation. So first, I'm going to go on the water and sewer rates and how we determine those rates. It is pretty simply, it's a formula. We did base it on sound research by doing, conducting studies with help from my partners at Rayburn as far as determining our indirect cost and making sure that we capture what we can from indirect costs that relate to our operational costs at water and sewer. But basically, in order for us to get the cost and the rate, we have to determine the total cost. So we have fixed costs and variable cost equals the total cost. What is included in our fixed costs? Our debt service, any capital improvements that we put within the operating budget such as plant capital, tech capital, and those type of minor capital accounts, not the large projects that we accomplish. Then the indirect costs are those associated with our billing and administration, since we don't contract many of those services out. These are in departments within the town such as our assessors, our tax collector, our accountant, any department, DPW, any department that possibly touches anything that has to do with water and sewer accounts. We are able to allocate a percentage to each department, and again, that was done by an in-depth study with Rayburn, that we're able to have the formula, and then we input our current, if there's any inflationary costs such as salaries and the like, we put those into that formula to get the percentage, so the percentage pretty much stays the same, but we input the new data for this year. And the biggest driver is our operating cost, which is the cost of our two operators for the water and sewer currently. We have Whitewater as our water operator and Jacobs as our new sewer operator. Some of the other challenges that we have are variables, are our utilities, any chemicals and supplies, our gas, then we have our consumption rate that we use as part of our formula because that is the income that we have that comes into the town from the rate payers. Less consumption means greater the rate, so we like to sell water because it does help us keep the rate lower. These are some of the factors that have gone into the rate changes and fixed costs that have increased. Our contracted increases with the service providers are all calculated, and I'll show that formula in a minute, but it can range from 3.9% to 5%. Of course, we have state mandates for increased regulations that cost the extra money, the new operator, the compost operations, and debt payments on facilities or capital improvements, which we have many, and I'm sure if you drive around town, you see the road projects that we have. Of course, we have water and sewer that we're doing within those. That leads to some borrowing and some uses of other money. This is a look at the water budget for FY '24 through FY '26. On top is the operations. Operations includes our operator as well as any other cost as into that budget line item, our capital budget. I do have a handout here with all this information if you need it. Our debt, as you see, debt is going down because we haven't borrowed any new money, so we're paying off the monies that we've borrowed already. Our reserves, we always keep a capital reserve in that budget of $100,000, and those are our total budgets. As you can see, over the last three years, our budgets have increased by $216,000, approximately 5%, which gives you an average annual increase of 1.7%. When we look at the water operator costs, this is just for the cost of whitewater. So you can see the trend on that in FY '26. The bottom number, so the top number is the prior year, so if you looked at FY '23, that would be FY '22. Once you do the formula, that comes out to the new rate of 1,489. So currently, for this year's budget, we're going to be looking at $1.656 million. And that is a simple formula through the contract. So we have no control over that. That's a fixed cost, and we have to use the formula below, and that's part of the contract. It's a consumer index price based on the CPIU of Boston. So for the wastewater treatment plant operations, we use, for the new fiscal year, we use the January '24 to January '25, the difference of all those CPIs, which gives you the 12.74, divided by the prior year, gives you the factor of .038. So that says the consumer index price for that period of time went up approximately 3.9%. So you apply that to last year's cost times the 1.9, gives you your new operator cost. So as you can see, that's a 3.9% just alone for that, not to account for any cost in electricity or indirect cost. Am I correct, Mr. Gregwa? Thank you. This is our sewer budget. Same increase. As you can see, there's a substantial increase this year in the operations. So this is FY '26 water budget total, $4.5 million, made up of operations of 2.266,285. The capital budget is within their cost. We have system capital in the amount of 189, equipment capital in the amount of 215,000, plant capital of 207,500, and technology capital of 63,000, as well as a reservoir dam. That's all included in that capital. Your debt and your indirect cost, and again, the reserves. Again, that's the water budget. There we go, water operator. This here is the sewer budget. Over three years, that budget has increased $404,000 or 8%. The average annual is 2.7%. On this slide, on the sewer operator costs, you're going to see FY '23 at 1.5, FY '24 at 1.545. It's the same consumer index price for the urban that you use the factors. In FY '25, we used a factor of 1.9 million. The only reason we used $1,900,000 is that we did not fund anything in the capital line items. Because we were going out for the new water operator, we did not fund the capital, and we put it all into the operating costs until we got the new contract. So the contract for FY '27 is 1,762,436. That factor will change for the following year. What are the major factors for the sewer increase? We have the new operator contract in February. The costs that were part of the operator contract were now moved to separate lines, the chemicals, the foam, compost. That's the new compost and process and operations. And then the billing clerk that we have that does water, sewer, and curbside will now be a direct cost across all three enterprise funds because that individual is going to be totally dedicated to the enterprise funds. So therefore, it moves away from an indirect cost that we had just a bunch of people touching billing to one individual that's going to be dedicated to that. Some of the things that we want to use to potentially offset those increases, we have talked about doing the septic receiving building. That would be for us to have any operators that pump out sewage as a commercial hauler to be able to go down and dump, because we do have the capacity at the wastewater treatment plant to have that come in. And then, once we get the new compost and process, we're in the process of going out to bid a quote for a screener. We have that going out. Once we purchase a screener and they do the screening of the compost, that will give us a higher grade material to be able to sell, and we have it in our agreement that we will cost share or cost revenue that materials, and that will be a budget enhancer. Bottom line, what's going to happen this year? As you can see, we have been very, to the taxpayers, trying to keep the rates low. We did a 1%, 23, 1% in '24 for water, zero last year. This year, we're proposing a 2%. The average over that four-year period would be at 1%. Given the cost factors on the sewer end and with the revenue, at this point, we are proposing a 6% increase for this year. However, over four years, it would be at 2.25. And that's really based on revenues. We did not capture as much sewer retained earnings last year as we had historically done prior. We were pretty flat on that, so we did not gain any traction on sewer retained earnings. We do have sewer retained earnings currently. However, we're going to allocate on Monday night a total of $600,000 to reline East Main Street Sewer Main because as they're doing that project and that they were putting new laterals in, much of the pipe every time they dug, it was cracking. So we do not want to be in a position that we repave that whole road at the cost of $3 million and then have to go back and dig it up. So we do have a proposal or a quote, and we will go out to bid to have that relined similar to what we had completed for River Crane. It's a pretty simple process. They just pump in from one manhole to the next. We do have a quote for that, so we'll be taking some retained earnings. That way, we do not have to go out to borrow, nor do we have to put it into additional monies into the rate payers. So that, right now, will be the rate increase as of today. Are there any questions on water and sewer that I can answer at this time? If you want to just go over there so people can hear.
Yes, Mr. Manager. Roland LaRichele Brey would ask, what is the projection for income from the compost? When the company had given us a presentation, the town presentation, they said that they could do marvelous things with making the compost a moneymaker?
Correct, yes. We do not have an estimate on that yet, but we have to still purchase the screening machine.
So do we have a, when do you think? Is it going to be before the next billing, the next budget?
Yeah, absolutely. So we do have that, we do have the screening quotes getting prepared to go out to, it has to go out to Goods and Services, Central Register. We are in the process of putting that all together with the technical specs. We're hoping to have that. We would like to get it sooner. I know the company that we had talked to that has one of those screeners said it was about a six-to-eight week lead time to get the screener in place. I think if anybody notices, they have already changed their compost procedures down there to smaller piles. But my understanding was that the odor has been somewhat better than it has been in the past, so. But that will be done, yes, it's a high priority at this time. Any other questions on water sewer? Okay. So we'll move to curbside. Curbside is not one of my favorite topics to talk about and discuss because this has been a challenge over the last, I don't know, eight years that I've been around, starting in council and then having to inherit this as the town manager. This is a challenge at best. We are in our first year of this solid waste and recycling enterprise fund. If everybody recalls, at the end of last fiscal year in the fourth quarter, we had to take it over. We paid out of the general fund with the enterprise fund starting in July. So therefore, we had no retained earnings. We started from zero and did our best analysis based on the research that was provided to us from the Collins Center as to how many units we believe we would capture, what the price structure should be, and how will we go forward with that. So the calculation on this, again, is pretty easy to determine. You're going, you have the fee. It's a flat fee per unit, strictly done by total subscriber-based cost divided by the total subscribers should give us our new rate. At that time, Collins Center recommended that we base our costs on 100% participation and that we would have about a 10% drop in fees. This first slide will show you. Our first billing was in FY '24 in the fourth quarter. Our total bills, number of bills that went out were 3,946. We build out a total number of units. Again, the units is pretty simple formula. Two families, two units, three, four, five, six. Our total number of units billed were 5,943 units. Our last billing for this last fourth quarter of FY '25, so a year later, we are down to 3,746, so a loss of 200 units. Number of units billed, 5,432, 200 units less, 200 number of bills, 511 units, is about a 9% total units billed drop, 8.6%. So when we had our rates in FY '25, you can see that we were at the 90% mark for yard and household waste was $114.82. That's what we set as the quarterly rate at that anticipated 90% participation rate. We are not at that 90% participation rate, and we estimate, based on the fact of where we're at for our revenue today and the cost of the program next year, that we are going to have to increase the rates. In FY '25, this was our budget. Operations, $2,485,399, indirect cost of 151,371. Our total budget was $2,636,828. This year, the budget goes up to $2,993. Again, we do not do any capital. We do not do, and we don't have any debt, and at this moment, we don't have any reserves, nor do we have any retained earning. So we do not do, we do not carry reserve in our budget like we do in the other budgets. The increase in our costs this year was printing of bills and postage. We did not carry a line item last year for printing and postage, so we had to include that in this package as well as an increased cost in our billing software. So this would be the first quarter estimate billing, and Mr. Yakobucci in my office has done the analysis on this along with Michelle, trying to come up with an estimated annual revenue and anticipate any potential further decline in number of subscribers because if we increase the rate, people are going to leave. So we're, he's got it conservatively at 5,200 units billed or 3,535 individuals. So based on the costs and rate, it puts us at the $150. And how is that made up? So for those that ask questions, and I know several of you may have it this year, if you look at the rate, just for the curbside solid waste recycling alone and waste disposal, it's six, that's the top number, the recycling processing. If you look at the two biggest prices that we have are yard waste collection and yard waste processing. That is actually the contracted subtotals. So for us to provide all those services is $2,485,337. Down below, we need somebody to run the program and do the billing. Again, that partial billing clerk is through all three enterprise funds. So that's not a total of one salary. That is a combination of the inspectors that we have and the cost of benefits. Then we also, just like the water and sewer, we have indirect costs. And then the mailing and billing that we did not have in last year's budget of $30,000 makes up a total budget. In order for us to do this, it would be 1,4672, and the recommended rate is 150 so that we have some capacity within there. The biggest question that we've been having here in the town hall is the town council made a decision last year based on the recommendations to include yard waste collection and yard waste processing, I mean yard waste drop-off, those two programs within the subscriber The yard waste drop-off, I think we all can agree, can be a challenge because we do not have the staff to stay down there all the time to say whether it's actual subscriber that is dropping off, whether it's during the week, all self-residents. So I believe that I have to have further conversations with the town council as to whether we want to continue this program, as well as the curbside yard waste collection because quite honestly, that, those materials, and I'm not faulting Casella at all, but those materials are not picked up along with your regular trash, and then they just go around town wherever people are putting out bags and picking that up. And I don't think they have the technology to actually bypass those houses to say whether we pick those up or not. So we're going to have to have a conversation in the next couple of weeks before we send out the bills with the town council as to how we want to proceed with this collection because that, off the top of the bill right there, just those two things, is approximately $20 on the rate per quarter, $20 per quarter. So we will have further discussion with the town council on that, but at this time, that is the proposed rate. It's a little different with the, I'm seeking clarification as to the setting of the curbside rate because there's nothing in the solid waste regulations that articulate who sets the rate. There's nothing in our charter that says who sets the rate, and the original rate was set by town council. So I have to follow up to see if that's a town council vote or how that vote will go because the water and sewer regulations are clear that the rate is set by the town manager. The solid waste and recycling has not been articulated clearly, so we have to determine how that rate will be set. So that would be the rates per unit, 115 for, is currently proposed rate of 150, an increase of 35, and then yearly 140. Sorry, Roland, I didn't do that on purpose on you. So that's where we're at on that. So are there any questions?
Mark Latoy, Dennison Hill Road. As far as the leaf dumpsters and the leaf pickup, so the enterprise fund is for the last previous year and for this projected year, the enterprise fund has been funding the leaf and yard dumpsters.
Right.
For an entire town because we're openly not policing it. So one group of membership can't provide the funding source for an entire town benefit. With that being said, is there, can we take it out and put it in the general fund? Is it, is there something, I mean, because that, you're, we're basically going after one group of people. My dad's not going to be able to afford $150, you know, trash service, and there's no surprise, it shouldn't be a secret as to why people are dropping membership. You can get it cheaper from another vendor and still get the service of leaf and yard waste, and that's what they're doing. They think it's funny because whoever's on this plan is covering the bill.
No, and that's why I said that further conversation had to be had with council because we do agree with that. I mean, that is.
Is this what we're sending to council, though?
I'll have a conversation with the chairman about getting on the next, not next week's agenda because I won't be out of town, but the follow-up agenda. So we need to have a conversation on that. There is no mechanism in the operating budget for us to take that on within the operating budget. We do not have the capacity. We are now at maximum levy capacity. So for us to take that on, I think this is a conversation that I think the council, the town manager, and either the, once the Board of Health takes office on July 1st, again, to have a discussion about how that program's going to work.
Okay, so this current rate or whatnot isn't going to be presented to them until it's straightened out?
Well, it's going to have to be done pretty quickly because the new bills for the fiscal year will go out for, in first week in August or the last part of July, so we will have a quick conversation. We can't belabor the point because bills have to go out.
Okay.
So there'll have to be a decision about what the town council direction would want to be on that.
Okay.
But I mean, I've always had a problem with the yard drop-off even before when it was free because it's a, I mean, inspectors are only there on Saturdays, and you know, you try to do the best then, but during the week, we don't really have the personnel to be down there.
No, I understand.
And the question becomes, how would the town want to go about either telling residents, you're on your own, figure it out? Because that's, they have to be the option.
I just, I just.
You know, so we agree. It's not something that we don't agree on.
I mean, it's cheaper now than if somebody brings up, you know, because legally, we can't pay somebody out of the enterprise. We can't pay for the whole town entity out of the enterprise, which is what we're doing. So we have to make sure that it either gets pulled out or not. So that would change the rate by, you said $20 roughly?
Yeah, the conversation, well, it depends, you know, if we decide that it's, we eliminate DPW altogether and not have the access to DPW, you're talking about, let's see, about 10 bucks from the rate.
Okay.
Okay? If we kept the curbside collection for those six weeks at the beginning, six weeks at the end, you know.
And that's kind of a free-for-all?
I, I'm thinking it probably is myself. I'm a resident, I see it.
No, I understand.
So, you know, that's another $10. So all combined, it would be, what, $10, $19.58?
Perfect.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Kevin Splain, Two Sunny Hill Drive. Mr. Town Manager, when, with this proposal of the $150, when do you plan on that being billed out to town residents?
Being what?
Being billed out, or when do you plan? Being billed out, or when do you plan on starting this program here at $150 per quarter?
The, like I just said, the first bill would go out the end of July or first week in August. So that's why.
So my theory, my thing is on that, though, going out that, you do not give town residents the timeframe to opt out because they're still going to have to pay for July, August, and Septembers. And I, you're not giving them the time to opt out because our next time to opt out is past that July deadline. I don't think that's fair on town residents doing that, not giving the ample opportunity to opt out of that program in that three-month timeframe. They're going to, they're going to have to pay for that three months if they opt out in the, in the middle of it, they're still going to have to pay the three months. I don't think that's fair on town residents.
Thank you for your input.
Roland Larochelle-Bry would have? A couple of things. This yard waste, whether it's curbside or this drop off for almost $200,000 is ludicrous to where Casella takes the dumpsters and just dumps it in a pile by the blue building and it's not even processed. Now back, we had a discussion back when I was on the Board of the Health on possibly going out for an RFP to see if anybody else wants to come into town and would be interested on doing the yard waste and processing it and possibly making some money instead of dumping it in a pile and making it a fire hazard during droughts. And I don't know if anything like that was looked at because like anything else in working for a long time within this, you're going to find this stuff dropped everywhere. So if this is eliminated, it's going to cost something else because the enforcement has to be increased. So I don't know if that is something to look at if anything was brought up, but we did have the discussion quite a while ago. The second thing is to caveat on what Mr. Splain said, by the solid waste regulations, it is explicit where people have the times to opt out. And the past several meetings in this town with what's been going on and what Councilor Shinia brought up and the rents and everything going on, we know what's going on. But I have researched, my wife has researched, there has been no numbers on what the proposed rates were on the town website, which it said, look on the town website and you'll see. And it says it's going to be effective in the July 1 bill. Well, the solid waste regulations, this is not going to give the opportunity at all for any landlord or resident to seek out a better rate because that's what it's all about. Our water's going up, our sewer's going up. I don't want to see the good progress that the solid waste department has been making because this town looks phenomenal as far as what it used to look like because it used to look like a dump no matter where you went. I don't want to see it coming back at that. But landlords are not going to have a chance, but they are going to be handcuffed now to pay this rate for three months whether they want to or not. And I would, I would implore you to, when you bring this to the council, that you amend the starting to be the September 1 bill because by the solid waste regulations, the community has until August 30th to follow the opt-out procedure. If this was done in the second week of May, it said the May 30th is the opt-out time, but that's here and gone. So I would implore you to give the residents time to enact and follow and enjoy the solid waste regulations by letting them go out, have some time. This is the first I've seen of these numbers. Other speakers said it's cheaper elsewhere. We don't know that yet. This is the first we saw these numbers. So you need time to go out and research as a good consumer and I, I request that the time that this is implemented is pushed off till the September 1st.
Thank you, thank you. I would definitely consider that. It is very valid point. The lateness on especially this solid waste, we were trying to get as best number we could for the last round of bills and income so that we could make sure we had some solid numbers on revenue. Our concern is if we even have enough money this fiscal year for the bills that went out there for our costs. So that had to come into play about whether there was any shortages within revenue. Like I said, this is our first year through this enterprise fund for solid waste and recycling. So it is very challenging to try, try to manage it and I appreciate all the hard work that you, Mr. Larochelle, and Kevin and Gus had put in the regulations. It's been a lot, a lot of hard work, a lot of frustration, and we continue to evolve it. Me personally, I would like to get out of the trash business, but that's not my decision. That's town council.
We have, we have, we have what we have now.
Right, no, I, I.
I don't want to see this picked away to solid waste rate payers.
Right, I just, I think we give a good product for the price that we have right now. And I do know, I will only speak from experience from a family member that lives in a different town who their rate for Casella for the same pickup was $83 per quarter. That we then switched my in-law's house to a different provider, which is 60-something dollars a month for the same pickup with no lawn leaf or anything like that. There was a vendor from out of town that I think his rate introductory year was $45 per, so, per month. So I think we tried last year and all of us collectively, because most of you all in this room that worked on this, wanted to try to make sure that we, because it was a brand-new program to be as reasonable as we could, I don't think we thought that we would get as many opt-outs. And really, it comes down to the opt-outs, right? The more, it's just like water, right? The more water you sell, the rate stays low. The more rate payers that we have for trash, your rate, you know, if you, if you went back and you said, okay, this year, and you said, you took a look at this, this, and if we were at, if we were at that 90% mark, we probably would have only went up about $15 for the whole year. You know, $5, you know, a little over $4, a little under $4 per quarter. That's pretty reasonable, right? I would think within that inflation if we had that 90%. But when you drop down below that, that from the 90, we're not even at 85%. You know, we're talking, we're going to be down to 80% at 5,100. And we're actually talking a little bit less than that, about 79, 78%, right? So that's what puts us in that threshold there. It just goes by number of subscribers. It's a pretty easy formula. So that is, that is the challenge. So we will continue to work on it. I understand the urgency in this. Again, it really came down to the, to the revenue portion to see what we were collecting for revenues. Dean was very concerned about the revenue portion, about where we were at on that, but we will take every comments in place.
And I understand the formulas and there's a cost of doing business and we're either going to raise the rate or cut the service. That's the only way you can play with an enterprise fund. But I've had for many years on the board, this has been discussed on the board, I have a real big problem with the drop off at the DPW.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, and you know as well as I do, we have the evidence that they don't have the technology nor do they, I don't think they want to, but if there's a brown bag at the end of the street, they'll be either picking it up whether you're in the program or not, or they're picking it up with the trash because I've seen that in my own streets. So we're getting charged tonnage on yard and leaf waste.
Right.
So, and the problem is, it's not, that's something for $200,000 to me, I never could get my head wrapped around it.
I can't.
For a tin can sitting there that gets picked up when it's full and dumped in a pile for $200,000 a year. And to try to, you've got every Tom, Dick, and Harry that uses that, and it is unenforceable because to have, even if it's staff with the curbside monitors, to have a current list of who's curbside and who is not, it's impossible.
Yeah.
It's impossible. So, you know, we talked about that to see about putting out an RFP for somebody who does this for a living. And even if we got rid of the $200,000 on the dumpsters and had somebody come in and offer it curbside for every dwelling unit up to six units in town.
Yeah.
And let people pick it up, process it, and make some money for themselves.
So I had just reviewed this presentation with Peg downstairs before we, you know, before I had this meeting, just had her run through it. And up where she lives, they actually have somebody that, a private hall that goes out and does it.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
A different private hall. And I know, we did have conversations with Casella and we have to reengage with that. They had a new operations person because they were upset with the fact that we were, I don't know if you were on that meeting with us when we, you know, when they had talked about, and you never followed up with about the fact that we, if they didn't have the markings on the truck, remember that meeting where that gentleman said about the yard waste and he was going to get back to us?
I was, I was in that meeting and he tried to nitpick us down to, they don't want to get involved with this.
But remember, he said he was going to get back to us and he never did.
That was last year.
We'll follow up on it, but they're all good points. I mean, it's, I think we struggled last year with do we offer that dumpster or not? And we, I think at the time, the all good intentions were for the rate of 115, you know, it was a pretty good rate at that point at 35 or $33 to offer that. But now when you see the reality of the cost a year later, is that, I don't, I don't think we should.
There was a lot of other issues besides the 115 where people opt out because it was a learning experience. There was no other caveat to get money. The rate was set at 115 per unit, whether you use the unit or not, it is what it is. But I know in my, this last tenure on the board, I was a little over a year, and this discussion has been going on about this yard and leaf waste for those residents that are Think about your street in the old days. Put your leaves out in the curb and the DPW went and sucked it up.
Yep.
I never got that on Worcester Street. So how do you make things to where people, we've been struggling with this whole situation because people in town are spoiled because it's trash and everything's been free forever. So they've been spoiled. And then you have the others that don't care, hence the illegal dumping.
Yeah.
But I think if we, we should really look at getting an RFP for another agency that may have a use for this processed stuff to sell it as mulch, things of this nature, and maybe would, they'd come in a heck of a lot less than the, that, almost what, $194,000?
Yeah.
But again, I wish you'd look at the solid waste regs and give people time to research.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address? Okay. Well, I thank you all for attending tonight's hearing. It's not easy. And I think, like I say all the time, I'm a taxpayer too and I own a house here, have been for a long time. So everything we do is through the lens of how it affects everybody in town, including family members that I have that live here, that rent apartments that have homes and that are elderly. So thank you all for being here tonight. And if anybody has any questions, as always, feel free to contact my office. Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing.